What is this? Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Mass County Board of Education's regular session. Mr. Jones, would you mind praying over the meeting, sir?
Yes, sir. Let us pray. You're having a Father's Day for a beautiful day that you gave to us today. I ask that you be with all of us tonight as we discuss important business that affects so many in our school district. That you be safe and allow us to return home safe to our families this evening. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Superintendent?
I recommend approval of the agenda dated June 12th, 2025.
Motion.
I have a motion and a bill seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend approval of the minutes dated May 2nd and 15th of 2025.
Motion second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Madison County recognitions, Mr. Superintendent, or district highlights?
District highlights from any of the board members?
Oh, we got a lot of good things going on in our district. Yeah, a lot of good things. Swimming, I saw some people swimming at the pool when I was coming by, so we're good. I'm being, I'm being...
He's trying to prolong this board meeting. Do I have anything else?
Next district.
What?
Not what? Me.
Anybody got anything else? Mr. Superintendent, ready to roll on, sir?
Yes, sir.
Well, y'all, y'all did have a, y'all did go visit the Spartan Intermediate School, didn't you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we did take a tour yesterday of Spartan Intermediate School. Superintendent, Mr. Byrd and Mr. Jones joined us. So, we got to do a walkthrough of the building, and it's amazing to see how much progress has been made.
How far along are they?
About forty percent is what Mr. Kazort was, was telling us, so it's a, it's a lot of, a lot of work going on. So, we're just happy that, that it's moving forward smoothly. And it was, it was nice to get, get inside the building and see the walls going up, the roof on, and those type of things. So, we're excited about it. And moving on, I do have a couple of other things that I wanted to highlight. The Spartan Middle School softball lighting update. Are we still on schedule for next month roughly? Okay, so July. So, and this is a new project. This is not upgrading. That campus was put in service in 1958. So, we're very excited to be able to offer that lighting to our softball team there. So, we look forward to dedicating those lights this upcoming season. Also, the care closet dedication is this evening. So, we're not, I'm not able to be there. But Spartan High School, Spartan Nine and Spartan Middle School, they're commemorating their care closets this evening. Kate O'Neill with the Care and Link. They're tremendous partners in that, and all the sponsors that help make that possible. We're just very appreciative of everything they do for us, so.
They do a lot. It's...
Yeah.
My district highlights actually probably a school system highlight. I'd like to welcome all of our new employees. And of course, we, we have a lot of employees that have entered retirement, many of whom have done a great job over a long period of time. And their, their, their contributions to the education of the children, which we're responsible for, will be remembered by many of these children forever. And our new employees, remember that you, you start school on the first of Ju, first of June. Start getting ready for it because August comes fast.
Let me welcome our new CSFO. This is your first meeting tonight. So, some of them's boring, some of them's exciting, some of them's good, some of them's bad, but welcome. You got your hour presentation ready for us?
Yeah.
Okay. I will call you up here in just a little bit. But, yeah, welcome, welcome all new employees, and congratulations on, we got some retirees too, so. Big, big step for that, so that's all I got. Is there anything?
No, just to follow up with Mr. Jones and the Spartan Middle, or Spartan Intermediate School. Talked with Frank while we were out there, and they're still shooting for a May 1 date. So, if we can get keys on May 1, that would be phenomenal to have it, you know, the month of May before going into the summer for, to have it open and ready to go for the first year. I mean, a year from here, we'd be having the first classes at Spartan Intermediate School. It's pretty amazing.
We'll still have to wax the floors, won't we?
Actually, they're polished concrete. Mr. Bass?
I hear you.
They're polished concrete, so it's going to be a lot less maintenance. And then it's LVT, LVT in the...
LVP.
In all the classrooms, but the polished concrete's going to be so much easier. Yeah, Joseph made sure that he talked about that while we were in there, that it's, instead of having all that extra waxing and unwaxing and all that, with the wax buildup and all, with the polished concrete, it's going to be a lot easier, smooth, so.
So, teachers won't have to move all their stuff out?
Will they still have to do some kind of thing over the summer? Will they still have to do something to the...
I mean, you can run a floor machine over it, press it with mopping, and it's quick to put your thing to one side while you also put it back.
Be a lot quicker.
Much quicker. One of the things we're trying to do because that's what maintenance requires for summer. Summer gets shorter, built harder, five, so.
All right. I'll have a question in a minute then.
Ms. Bass? We got this again. Nobody thinks that's funny.
Yep. All right. I sent you guys on an email the proposed changes for the grading policy that is in our board policy. Seven point three point one. So, before we went to Power School integration, when we had I Now as our integration, elementary schools used SNNU for our music PE. When we transitioned into Power School, there were formatting issues that at that time were unable to be resolved. So, we had to enter numeric grade for those. So, after a whole lot of feedback from the teachers and the principals, we met with all of the elementary principals and discussed what adjustment we might need to make. And we've met with IT, and they can now do a format for the report card that can reflect SNNUs as well as ABC grades. So, the proposal is to provide an alternative grading system for grades one through three to reflect satisfactory, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory in the areas of science, social studies, handwriting, art, PE, and music. You may question why we would do that for science and social studies in grades one through three. In those primary grades, the Numeracy Act and the Literacy Act have enacted such a maximum amount of time for math and ELA that science and social studies has become largely embedded into the knowledge section of CKLA. And so, our teachers have expressed that they would have to give basically redundant grades for ELA, science and social studies, because the grades are coming from the knowledge section of the ELA text. And so, after a lot of discussion, we feel confident that this is in the best interest of the students and the teachers to reflect that, that our prioritization is meeting the requirements of the Literacy and Numeracy Act as well as focusing on mastery of those standards. So, that's the first recommendation. And then Jess, can you advance it one? Oh, yes, sir.
What's the criteria for satisfactory grade? What's the criteria for needs improvement grade? What's the criteria for unsatisfactory? Right now, as written, this seems very, very subjective.
I can understand that. A satisfactory grade would be a passing grade. An unsatisfactory grade would be lower than a C. I'm sorry. Satisfactory would be something where it is higher than a C. Needs improvement would be in that D range. And then an F would be unsatisfactory. That's how it would equate.
Yeah, I think if we're going to, I worry about it is that it's not included in this plan.
Okay.
I also worry about feedback parents, particularly for science and social studies. You know, we go in from five categories, A, B, C, D, F, to three categories. And, you know, I, I know that when my children went through elementary school, I, I was very concerned, very interested in how they did in science. And of course, we taught social studies almost every day. And I, I, I wonder if we're reducing the feedback we're giving to parents to do that to get them settled.
I don't believe so, because I believe right now what the teachers are having to do is to be redundant in the grading that they're entering into the gradebook. And that's based on the teacher feedback that we have received. This is not a recommendation that my department came up with. This came from grassroots of the teachers talking about the management of the CKLA program, the requirements of both skills and knowledge. And knowledge is very in-depth for science and social studies. Each knowledge unit is so much more in-depth than what the science standards for the state are. I can give you an example. This year, I visited a third grade classroom. They were, the systems of the body had been the knowledge unit that they had been working on for the nine weeks. The vocabulary in the systems of knowledge for the third grade students that they were required to have mastery were cerebrum, cerebellum, synapses. It's very high quality, very high quality science and social studies instruction. But those are also the grades that they're using for reading comprehension. And so, marrying those and reflecting it in the science and social studies through satisfactory, unsatisfactory is going to equate to also their comprehension in ELA.
But being able to read a word and know what the word means is two different things.
Comprehension literally is knowing what the word means.
You know, whether the cerebrum is in your brain, what the function is, those are independent than reading it, right?
All of that is assessed through knowledge. Students are labeling the brain. Students are writing responses on how information is taken into the brain, how it is utilized inside the brain, how it transmits inside the brain, how nerves and muscles are controlled by areas of the brain. All of that is the information that the students are learning, and it is the practice that they are doing in the classroom. And that is why those are what they're using for their grades for science and social studies. It's actually much higher quality instruction than the students likely would have received from Studies Weekly.
Mr. Byrd, with the, the CKLA format and with our numeracy and our literacy acts, what you're saying is that you're, you're used to the traditional, you know, five subjects of English, reading, math, science, and social studies. What you're, what's happening now is because of the demands for literacy and the numeracy act is that the science and the, the social studies is more embedded in the CKLA program. So, where the, that is, is embedded inside the, the English Language Arts block for there. It's not, it's pretty much a standalone course like what we're used to in the old school ways. And so, that's why Ms. Bass is talking about it being, you know, redundancy of grades is they're just basically repeating what there is already for reading comprehension because that's really the science in the social studies. They do have the little bit of time that they do have outside of math and reading or the literacy and numeracy act. They do expand on those things, but it's not a standalone course.
Correct.
Where you see it five days a week, where everyone gets a, you know, a forty-minute period of each of those five.
Correct. So, typically, what the schools are doing right now is the hands-on components of science, the project-based components of science and social studies. Those are being done on alternating weeks. And those would also go in to the combination of the SNNU. But ultimately, the learning would not change.
But if you, if you're looking at it like satisfactory is if you want to say seventy percent and greater?
I can add that in a column.
Is a sixty to, you know, sixty-nine or something like that, and your numerical off to the side, and unsatisfactory is below a sixty. You know, we can do something like that off to the side just so there's a numerical value that goes with the SNNU if that, if that, you know, helps with the clarification for you.
Well, I'm for that. And the reason why I'm for that is because I want the definition of satisfactory to be the same system-wide. I want Monrovia Elementary School satisfactory to be the same one as that Lynn Fanning or, you know, and currently doesn't have it. I do worry about not having formal tests in these subjects, these two subjects. I'm not, I'm not so much worried about the extracurricular activities because when they advance to fourth and fifth grade, there will be very little training for having those types of tests.
The assessments of knowledge are the same thing that you would have considered a science or social studies test previously.
Assessment of knowledge for...
Of the content that is in the knowledge units. So, an example would be ancient civilizations, human body systems, landforms, cultures, religions. All of those things are the things that are in the course of study. All of those things are the things that are assessed through knowledge.
I, I feel much better having a set criteria. What I don't understand is how we're going to evaluate the criteria for science and social studies. How are we going to evaluate those? Maybe, maybe I'm just not familiar with the quote-unquote new system of doing it.
The CKLA.
Yeah. But I mean, is that, we're going to have an independent evaluation for science and social studies embedded within the CKLA?
No, the CKLA offers, that's the, the embedded instruction. What the CKLA does is it, it builds on prior knowledge. And so, what it does is it exposes kids that are earlier, earlier age to more in-depth strands of knowledge in science and in social studies. And so, because the demand's based on the Literacy Act and how much, the amount of time that we have to invest in the, the program, when the state went with the CKLA program, that's one of the things they understood was that, that embeddedness of science and social studies being there, that's where they were going to get the majority of their instruction in the, the primary grades was through that, the CKLA program. And that's why it, you know, it's, it's hard to transition to the, you know, we're used to six-period day or seven-period day. And, you know, you go to a social studies class and a, and a, a, a science class. But this elementary nowadays is, is pretty much, it's, it's the reading component and the literacy component and, which has got the embedded math and science, and not math, but the embedded science and social studies. And then you have the numeracy. And that's where a majority of their school day is spent, in those two whole subject areas with embedded...
Once you look at scheduling requirements for elementary, and you include numeracy act, literacy act, minutes of core instruction for numeracy and literacy, then the requirements for a block for tier two and a block for tier three in elementary classrooms, there is no more time in a day, more than maybe half an hour, when between mandated art, music PE, mandated tier two, tier three, numeracy, literacy. It leaves about thirty minutes. So, what schools have been doing is utilizing the knowledge units to, to assess and to guide. If they are working on ancient civilizations, then that is what the teachers work on in social studies during that knowledge unit. And the activities that they might do in that thirty minutes would reinforce and support the information that they're learning and reading about. And I assure you that the level of the knowledge units, and you could ask any teacher who's in kindergarten through third grade, what the students are learning in knowledge is very high quality. The, and it's not just reading. The whole point of CKLA is that it's a comprehensive program. And in comprehensive, it means that they are educating them on citizenship, background knowledge that they need to build the domains of learning to successfully achieve in grades four and up. The reason that we didn't even recommend it for grade four is because in grade four, that's where we start to begin to look at standardized assessment for those subject areas. But the students are getting the learning. It's just embedded in their literacy and their numeracy. Even with science, in all of the course of studies for science in grades K through three, measurement, volume, units of measure, those would be what we would categorize as science in those standards, but they are also math in those standards. So, those grades can be interchangeable there. But what we're having is that teachers are having to put it into two different, like the same assignment is going into two sections of their gradebook at a time. Or they are putting all of the knowledge units into science and social studies. So, as far as the quality of the learning for the students, I don't believe that this change would sacrifice anything related to that for our students.
But that's not my question. Maybe I didn't, was, was, was skillful in asking it. Where does the seventy percent come for a kid to get satisfactory? Where does that number come from?
Can I, let me ask, see if this will help me out. So, the SNU satisfactory, we know that's a passing grade. That kid is a first grader. They have all S's. They're going to second grade, correct?
Yes.
Okay, an N. Is that a passing grade?
It would be a passing grade, but it would be related to a D.
If a first grader has all N's, they're going to the second grade.
So, science and social studies are not really weighted in the decision on pass or fail at that grade level. It's based on...
But it's going to be all the science, social studies, handwriting, art, PE, and music and all that stuff. I mean, it's...
Math and reading are what we look at in early childhood grades.
So, a U, a U is a failing grade?
Correct.
I thought, Bill, you can tell me, are you asking what kind of numeric value you're putting on these? Is that what you're kind of asking?
Well, I'm asking where are we getting the number from?
Okay.
So, I, I mean, you know...
How are you getting there?
How, you know, I, I, I can support this concept if it's a seventy and above, and the number sixty-nine and fifty-nine. But I still don't understand where I'm getting that...
It's still from the same content that they have been doing previously.
So, this would marry up with their ELA grade?
Yes, very similarly to their ELA grade, except it would be from the knowledge standards and not from the skill standards.
Can y'all assign a numeric number to this, or is that something that's not possible?
Oh, I can add a col, column that, you know, clearly outlines that below a fifty-nine is a U. That's not a difficult thing to do.
Below a sixty.
Okay. Fifty-nine and below. Excuse me.
But my, my question is, where, if we're going to get it from the knowledge base?
They may also add in the project-based learning that they're doing in addition to the knowledge. It just gives the teachers a little less pressure in having to have the same quantity. We have established minimum expectations for grades in all subject areas now. And this will allow them to have that flexibility in their grading in science and social studies and handwriting, art, music, and PE.
For, I, I would like to have some way to identify, particularly for science and social studies, where the grades coming from. Would you just basically just stole it? I'd like to include that in the policy.
That's in our academic guide. Yeah. That's in our academic guide. I can share with you the information about what we have done in the academic guide. For K eight.
Okay.
It is not a board-approved document because it's not related to Carnegie units.
Okay. So, why can't we put what's in our academic guide in our policy?
You can, but if anything ever needs to get tweaked in an academic guide and it's in policy, then we have to do a whole policy review manual and all of that. And...
How long have we been doing this in the academic guide?
I guess since, as lo, I mean, I don't know. It's been there since I've been a principal, which has been fifteen years, so.
Have we had, have we had...
At one time, SNNUs were in our grade policy and were in the academic guide. It only changed recently where they were removed, and then they, now we're trying to add them back.
The power school really took them out because they didn't know how to deal with it at first, and so they had to, they had to build it back in. And now that they can do it, now, that's what they're asking is can we put these back in there?
I Now took them out. I Now took them out.
Yeah. Well, I Now, actually, I Now had them.
Correct. It was SNNU. Yes, correct.
And so, you know, and this may help you too, Mr. Byrd, is like, so if they're doing a, if they're doing a knowledge unit and it's on body systems, so what they're doing is their comprehensive grade is, we'll just say they get an eighty-six. What the teachers are doing is they're taking that eighty-six that they got and for that, that body systems, and they're plugging that, and they're just putting it right over there into a, a science grade is eighty-six. So, they're using the same information, they're just plugging it into different content area gradebooks. Instead, they're not going and teaching a different unit on...
Science and social studies.
They're using what's already there. That's why they're saying that this would, this would save a lot of time for the, the teachers as far as that.
I understand this, but what I'm looking for is for us to be, right now, if it's working in the academic guide, we're going to put something out that's going to be for system-wide that's similar to the academic guide. And we're saying that we're going to have satisfactory be above seventy, and it's going to be these criteria in the academic guide. I think that, that if we're going to go this far in the policy, we should include that also in the policy change.
I can add a column with the grade correlation. But we have never had in policy exactly what teachers put in their grade books that I reckon, like I can ever think of.
What I'm saying is, let me tell you what I think you're telling me.
Okay.
You're saying that with the C, with the, with the reading, that this, this information is embedded, and what we're going to do is we're going to have a SNU, we're going to do seventy and above, sixty-nine and fifty-nine. I think everybody agrees with that. That's going to be a step forward. My question is, why can't we have a uniform way to get to that seventy and above? Why can't we have a uniform way to get to that sixty or sixty-nine? And if it's just knowledge-based, we're still doing a, a quick entry into it. And you say we're still doing this in the academic guide. You know, I started off today not supporting this.
Yeah.
And I'm getting, with, with the criteria, I feel more comfortable with it. I just need to know where the criteria is coming from.
So, what teachers are expected to record in their grade book has been very vaguely defined previously in the academic guide, where it was a school-by-school, you know, principal might set the standard for how many grades needed to be recorded. I think I may have mentioned this previously when we were talking about standards-based reporting. I know you and I maybe had this conversation. But what I have found is that some principals are very tight on monitoring that grades are entered into the grade book and that they accurately reflect the work that students have done. But I have also seen multiple times at multiple different schools this year where the grades that are reflecting an entire nine-weeks grade may have been two daily grades and one test grade for the entire nine weeks, and that is completely unacceptable.
I agree with you on that. And at one time, when Mr. Cubic taught under, we used to have a division where you had fifty percent test, and the other fifty percent were quizzes, homework, classwork, and other, other assignments. You know, and then I said...
All of that is in the academic guide. And I can send you what is in the academic guide.
But, but, but you touched on the issue that I'm trying to help solve.
Okay.
I want for the criteria for this to be the same, for, similarly the same in every school in our system. I want for the criteria for this to be the same, for similarly the same in every school in our system. And so that a kid at Monrovia is roughly the same as a, as a kid at Harvest, who's roughly et cetera, et cetera. And if the principals are ignoring the academic guide and it's written down, that's one thing.
It just.
They're ignoring, but if they're ignoring the policy, then that's, that's something else.
It just previously wasn't written down explicitly. And so what we've done is we met with all of the administrators and my teacher advisory committee, and we looked at what we felt would be reasonable in, um, the grading. And so, one, they wanted to increase the value of, um, the weight for assessments. That's gonna go to sixty percent, daily grades are forty percent. And a lot of.
What category for daily grades?
I'm sorry?
What is included in daily grades?
Daily grades would be, uh, homework, uh, classwork, um, any practice related to preparing for the assessment.
Quizzes?
Yes.
Can I ask a, sorry.
And quizzes could also be included as a test grade as well. So it just, if it's a formative assessment where we're gauging whether a student knows the content and is ready to move on or needs tiered instruction, we do not believe that should be recorded as a test grade. If it's a, if it's a quiz that is in the process of measuring their learning, then we believe that should be a daily grade. A test grade should reflect when we have taught it and we believe they should have mastered the standard. And so that is the difference.
We're allowing students to retake test grades?
Uh, no, we are allowing students to continue to learn when it's under daily grades. But once it's a summative test grade, not nec- no, not necessarily so, no. So when I say that, I would say if it is within the nine weeks' period and a child is re-taught and reassessed, then that grade could be recorded during that nine-week period.
The highest grade of multiple tests?
The, the reassessment could be recorded in the gradebook.
What I was gonna ask is, would this be, could this be used as an incentive to make a kid not try as hard? This is just for me, no, 'cause if you can get a seventy and another kid works really hard to get a one hundred, both of them are still just S's. Does, I mean, does that, do you see what I'm saying? If I can just get to the S, my mom and dad's happy.
It won't reflect that.
Okay.
In their reading grade, it won't reflect that. And, and when I say the knowledge assessments, if it's human body systems and they're expected to label the bones or the muscles in the body, and that is some of the work that they're doing, then the labeling sheet of where those are located in the body aligns with the science standard more than the comprehension standard. So that assignment would be recorded as a science assignment.
I have, I still think the criteria for awarding satisfactory, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory, a rough criteria should be uniform throughout the system.
I agree with that.
I, I, and I, and you're talking about teachers giving multiple assessments. What if a teacher says no?
Um.
Because as I read this, a teacher will assign grades to confer of activities. And I mean, what if a teacher says, I've given Johnny two tests and he's failed them both?
Well, it wouldn't be considered best practice to do that. It would be considered best practice to make sure that our students learn the content.
Don't get me wrong, I mean, I understand that there's more forgiveness in the younger grades than there is, let's say, in a, in a, a high school algebra class.
Correct.
Because if I was teaching high school algebra class, there'd be no forgiveness.
And I, I just, my, I, I don't believe that. I believe that the goal is for kids to master the standard, not to fail kids on the work. And it's a philosophical difference that you and I have. Uh, I think we've, we've met on this philosophical difference before. But when a child takes a driving test and they fail the driving test, do they never get the opportunity to get their driver's license again?
This is off-topic, we're talking about here.
No, it isn't. Because when a child takes a test and they fail it, and they go back and they practice, and they learn it, and they take it again, they should receive credit for it.
Then in a, in a secondary math test or physical science course, they've fallen further behind.
Do you want them to learn the content? Then they are not falling further behind. Because the goal is to provide them with intervention until they learn it.
If you, if you, if you don't learn, don't know what your first week of math, in the second week, you gotta learn twice as much.
You're incorrect.
Okay. So, uh, yeah, we'll move on here in just a second, but like the SNU, would it be, this is just, I'm, I'm asking questions because I'm gonna have to answer questions to parents, so dumb it down for me, I guess.
Did you not receive SNNU's on your report card when you were in school? I did.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, it was.
So you don't think the parents who are your age would understand the SNNU?
I can, I can, but I, I was just trying to, yeah, but I was just trying to, I'm not, I'm, 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 I'm good with it. I'm just saying, would it not, would it, what if there was a fourth category? Like an E for excellent? Because I'm, I'm just saying the whole ninety, or the whole one hundred to seventy.
What difference does an E and an S make?
Uh, thirty points to me.
Not to me, because it's either they learned it or they didn't learn it.
But I want somebody to be excellent at it.
And this is where our parents get hung up on a grade. If their kid doesn't have a one hundred, they don't think their kid learned it. But that is not true. Do you never make a mistake at your job, so you would only be good at your job if you did it perfectly one hundred percent of the time?
No, no, I, I, I get, I, yeah, I get, I get what you're saying. I was just, the thirty point, I, I, I'll go ahead and admit, I'm hung up on the numbers. I mean, it, it, I am. I just, from, I think that there would be another, I just don't like the difference in one hundred to seventy, if that makes sense. That's just me being a daddy, I guess.
I mean, we can add an E for a ninety to a one hundred if that makes everybody happy.
That would make me happier, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
It'd also make me happy if we have kind of a uniform rough criteria, so that, so that we're giving the same E, S, N, and U.
What would that uniform criteria look like to you?
I don't know, because I've never taught this way.
This is no different than how we've been teaching.
Okay.
We are teaching and re-teaching so children learn. That is the goal of teaching.
I agree.
The grade is not the goal of the outcome. The learning is the goal of the outcome.
Good.
The, so what you record as the grade, as long as the parent knows my child is doing well or my child is not doing well, I do not see where that is any different. Where you know, okay, the S means my child learned it. The U means my child did not learn it.
Can I throw a caution out here?
Sure.
My concern is when we retest, that the parent comes in and says they want them to reassess. Are, are we going, is the, we're going, the teacher's making this decision?
Correct.
Because I know some, I'm just gonna say helicopter parents that fly in there and say they need to be retested on this. We want them to learn. But I want them to learn with our system, not with the parent hovering in there to do it the third time.
No, I understand that. The goal is not that, but the goal is that what they're graded on at the end of the nine weeks reflects what they've learned within the nine weeks' period of time.
I agree with that.
Not that what they've learned on, if, if I'm learning fractions and the very first time fractions are presented to me, and my teacher passes out a worksheet, and I have not comprehended whole to fourth, then the teacher checks that, and she says, oh, Carrie needs a little bit of help with wholes and fourths. And then I take it the next time, and I know it, the goal was accomplished, that I learned it. So the daily grades reflect that process. When they get to the test, we're giving the test at a point that we feel like they've mastered the content. That's why there's a different category there. And that's why it's weighted more, is because by that point, the teacher should have given them every opportunity to be successful. Now, every kid's not gonna end up with an A. Every kid's not gonna end up passing with that. They will continue to struggle. But to get that growth mindset in kids that you can continually improve and get better is our goal. It is not that you take the test once, you never get it, you're defeated, I'm gonna fail, and I continue to fail. And I have to speak to this because related to our math classes where we have high numbers of failures. Continuing to give them an F repeatedly does not do anything to assist them in learning the content. The goal is that we identify there's a problem based on that F. We provide intervention and instruction, and we give them an opportunity to improve. And that is where it correlates to the driver's test. Because if a student fails their driver's test, and they go home and they practice and they practice, and they come back and they take their driver's test again, do they get their license if they pass it the second time? Why does school do them differently than that? I don't understand why we want our kids to feel like there is no way out of a failing score.
Carrie, this, this was brought forward from the teachers and from the schools and principals. So let's do this, let's, let's, if, if the board's okay with this, let's do a survey of our teachers and just ask them, are.
It's just gonna be hard to get a survey while they're off contract in the summer.
That's true, but are, are they good with the SNNU? Or are they, you know, are they open to having a ESNU, which means?
Oh, they won't care the difference between a E. If the E makes everybody happy and we add that, that's fine.
Okay.
I don't think they'll care. I think what they're frustrated with is feeling like they're having to create additional assignments to put into their science gradebook when they're already recording those grades in reading.
I, I don't disagree with that, there should be a uniform criteria.
By uniform criteria, do you mean a minimum number of grades taken in a nine weeks' period of time?
No, well, let's take, let's take science, which is a third level mine. How, how do we get, my question is, how do we get the same, it doesn't have to be exactly the same rough way to compute a kid who has an eighty-five, or an eighty, seventy-five, or fifty-five, or fifty, sixty-five? We should have some type of similar, I used to work similar, not exact, some type of similar, similar process.
So, Mr. Bird, if.
That way, a- as you said, and I believe to you when you said that there's a variance of how principals behave.
We have set expectations in the academic guide that say that in every core subject, there is a minimum number of daily work grades and a minimum number of test grades. We are holding administrators accountable, starting in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, to check those gradebooks and make sure that those grades are being recorded and that they reflect work being done, not participation grades or cans-to-the-can food drive. All of that is in the academic guide.
Is, is this something?
I haven't seen the academic guide, neither has the rest of the board.
I'm happy to share it with you. It has never been a board-approved document because it does not relate to Carnegie units and scheduling at high schools, and that is why the nine-through-twelve academic guide is approved at, by the board. Is because it is governed by state laws on Carnegie units and credit awarding.
Well, I look forward to, to looking at it and see if it solves.
I'm happy to share it, it's ready to go, I can email it to you tonight.
I would be, I would have no problem with putting, to make some more meat to your academic guide, C academic guide, but I wanna see it when there's a change. Does that make sense? I get why you don't wanna bring it to the board, I get that. I think in two thousand and eleven is probably when it came out.
Okay.
I, I think.
Okay.
Because it used to be this thick.
It is quite thick still. It's not that quite thick, but it is, it is not that quite thick, but it is.
Passing, we were passing policies and shoving it.
You're talking about the academic guide, you're talking about the policy.
I'm talking about when it came out of the policy was probably in two thousand and eleven.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, I think that's when it come out of policy.
And I, I don't have that history, I'm sorry, I don't, but.
I, I don't have a problem with us saying to give more meat to the academic guide. I just wanna know when you change it, because I'm gonna get questions, even though that academic guide is not board-approved, I'm still gonna have questions on that.
Sure, and I'm happy to share anything that we're providing with you.
Oh, I'm just saying, th- that's me.
I have no problems with C, refer to academic guide for system uniformity, I have no problem with that.
Because I would like to see us.
I would like to read it first.
Sure, I'll, I'll share it with you, we've been so thorough with it. Uh, we've been presenting it regularly with administrators, getting feedback, uh, sharing it within departments to make sure that everything in it is correct and it's updated. Mrs. Henshaw has spent a tremendous number of hours, uh, this past year working on it to get it to where the quality of the expectations are higher. Um, and I feel very confident that you'll be pleased with what we have there. We are trying hard to make sure that learning is our number-one priority, not just grades. And that's a philosophical change from maybe even how we were when we were in, in, in school. But it is not lowering expectations, it's raising expectations for our teachers.
And I think this would raise that, but, uh, that, I think it would, putting it in there, C academic guide, because we're board-approved in that.
I agree with that, I don't, and honestly, we debated, do we need to put the percentages and the number of grades into board policy? But what we felt is that as state legislation changes and things like that, that are constantly now changing, that we would have to bring it back to you frequently for things like that because they are coming up often from the state now. There's so much more of time expectations now than there were when I was in the classroom twenty years ago. It's entirely different.
All the time, so, I mean, that's not a big deal to me.
Same here. But. There's a process with that.
It is, but if we, if we just say, as long as it comes to us and says, this is the changes in the, am I wrong?
No, I, I, I agree with you. If, if the academic guide covers the issues.
I think it fixes Bill's problem.
Yes.
Except for the column with the correlation to the numbers, which is easy to add, and the addition of the E, easy to add, I can make that revision and send that back out to you guys on Monday.
Look forward to it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's all I was asking for is, I just, call me old-fashioned. I just like to see a kid earn something, you know what I mean?
I understand.
That's, that's just me, I mean, that, I'm sorry.
So the, so the next session, section that we needed to make updates to, when the new course of study came out, they consolidated reading and, um, ELA into one subject area. All of that content is in the course of study under ELA now. So what we are proposing is, and this, we again have talked through with the teachers and the principals, and we've really looked into, um, why, the pros and cons of keeping them separated versus not. But based on the fact that the course of study combines ELA and math, I'm, I'm sorry, ELA, reading and writing there, what we're proposing is instead of having in the board policy, reading and language broken out into two different subject areas, they're consolidated the way they are from the state now in ELA. And, um, because of that, it goes from having, um, six subject areas down, uh, and I don't know why science and social studies are struck through there. I need to fix that, um, because that was really, oh, because it's related to third, first through third. In first through third, because of the Numeracy Act and Literacy Act, retention is based on reading and math. And that criteria is set by the state. For grades four through six, it will continue to be the same, except we're removing reading and language as separate subjects and putting a consolidated ELA there. Any questions on that?
That all makes sense to me, but our world knows, uh, wouldn't it, Madison City's policy on this, they retain sixty-five in the middle grade. We, when I was in the classroom, I went from sixty-five to sixty. I saw a five percent compound rate of success like this. And I always had kids that wanted like a sixty-four, four, four, six. They then didn't wanna make down, they wanted like a fifty-nine, four, four, six, about six rounds up.
Who used to be a sixty-five? I don't, I don't know.
When related to retention, um, I just had a meeting with a parent about retention last week. Research shows that a student who is retained in the early grades is two-hundred-and-fifty percent more likely to drop out of high school. So. So retaining more kids, to me, is not a solution. Teaching at a higher quality level where our students are learning is the solution. So set that number with whatever you want it to be, but until we improve our instruction, that compounding difference that you may have seen in your classroom will not improve until classroom instruction improves.
You and I are agreeing that it's not a permanent classroom structure. And I'm sure that, uh, when we look at math, and of course, math is a thing that I'm most passionate about, and physical science, that instruction is so pyramid-based.
It is, and, and that, you know, I'll bring it up again. I would like to have a secondary math and science specialist in my department so that we have somebody who can target that and address that specifically. Mr. Cubic, sorry, not to bring that up in a public meeting, but if I'm on the hotspot for that data every time, I'm gonna continue to bring it up every time.
You said she was gonna bring it up.
You know, I don't know who hired her.
Bill Burr.
But, but all, seriously, I wanna let y'all know, Carrie is doing a phenomenal job with our instructional department. We, you know, and we were already been working on some of this stuff, but she's really, you know, her and her department are doing fantastic work in turning our district around. We are, you know, we, we've already seen, we can't talk about them yet, but we've already seen.
The data is embargoed.
preliminary data that's looking really, really good for our district. And, um, and I think you guys are all gonna be very, very pleased. But I do wanna commend her and.
Thank you.
Your team, you guys are doing great work.
Thank you.
You continue to excel.
Thank you.
And we do, you know, even though that, you know, we have some challenging discussions, you know, it is very much appreciated what you do.
It is.
I appreciate you, yeah.
But, but quick to the staff, do we got?
I'm happy to. As soon as I get to my computer, I'm gonna shoot it to you right now, Mr. Bird.
I have one question, it'll be easy.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
Just for my knowledge.
Not enough questions tonight before you get.
Just for my knowledge, in the CKLA program, you mentioned knowledge units and skills units.
Yes, that's correct.
The only two, or is there more?
No, it's not, it's divided, knowledge and skills. Skills is related to early literacy skills, phonics, phonemic awareness, um, reading fluency. And then knowledge is related to building prior knowledge for our students for the things that are content-based. It is nonfiction text, it is high-level vocabulary, it is integrated science and social studies, that's what knowledge is. But it is also to build comprehension of high-quality text. When I was teaching reading, um, as a classroom teacher, we mostly did fiction text. And, um, the understanding now is that fiction text is very vague. And so it's very difficult for kids to connect concepts and learn vocabulary through something that is vague. And so this, uh, program connects things that they can learn about that are tangible, that they can then begin to connect vocabulary and reading comprehension to, so that they're building those skills in a way that's useful as they progress to the higher levels of math and science and social studies. So it's really very high-quality. I think if you asked any teacher about knowledge, they would fill you in on that they really are resistant to some of the things about CKLA. But knowledge is not what they're resistant to.
And since she brought it up, um, Carrie has diligently gone through her budget and she has restructured some stuff. And she has found a way to cover the math and science, uh, resource specialist out of her existing budget. So that is something that, um, I was gonna send you guys some information on it that I am planning on talking to y'all about moving forward with that. It would be a secondary math and science person.
And it would have to be somebody who's had a proven track record of successful, uh, secondary math or science instruction, preferably math, uh, would be my preference of what I'm looking for in that candidate.
We're gonna get Bill to step down and, and apply for that job?
I would rather not, I don't wanna get Carrie out of jail.
It might be Mr. Bird who goes to jail, who knows?
But, um. But, um, you know, that is something that we're looking at doing. And since it won't be an additional cost at all, and it really is needed. And we need to, and we also wanna fortify, you know, secondary ed is one of our areas in our instructional department that we have limited people. And so putting another secondary person, especially in math and science, could be a real asset to our district, so.
I, I just wanna say this, we do have very good discussions, we do have heated discussions, we do, some of us do aggravate each other sometimes, but we are, we are a family, so.
I know that. And I don't take offense to it. I know, I, I think Mr. Vess said I'm a little, what was the word?
No, don't say it right now.
Uh, intense, I'll use the word intense rather than the word that you used, uh-huh. And, but it is because I believe in the work that we're doing. I also believe in our teachers as the most important piece of this puzzle. And when they come to me with something and they say, this is something we could solve that would make things better, I wanna listen to them and I wanna embrace that. None of what is happening in the instructional department is my personal agenda. I just want our kids to have the very best quality instruction. And sometimes that means we have to change.
I was gonna joke and say, I wish you had a little bit more passion for your job, but it would've been a big joke. And we, it comes out in your arguments with us and, and, hey.
They're appreciated, I just want you to know.
Yeah, I understand that. And I appreciate you guys not just hating me for saying what I think.
Because hearing you two argue teaches me a lot of stuff, so. So I was just saying, thank you.
The good thing about having somebody who challenges you is that it makes you better. And, and I do appreciate that because sometimes there are things that can be learned and can be improved. And that's the goal for our department and that's my goal for myself every day, is to constantly learn and improve, so. And I'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, administrative items?
Yes, sir. I recommend approval of the Madison County School Systems Athletic Handbook as submitted.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend approval of the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven Madison County School Systems Academic Calendar as submitted.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Did you vote Mr. Jones?
Aye. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I recommend approval of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-nine MCSS Capital Plan as submitted.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion?
This is an amendment, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend approval of the bid renewals, uh, oh, excuse me, I recommend approval of the Hazel Green Middle School Construction Project as submitted.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend approval of the bid renewals as submitted.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Yeah, I couldn't hear you.
I recommend approval of the April financial statements and payment of bills as submitted.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend approval of the contracts for services as submitted.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
I recommend approval of the personnel items and the addendums as submitted.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Can we take a pause there for a second, sir?
Yep.
So first of all, we approve two positions tonight. Our new principal at Riverton Elementary School is Ms. Tanya, Dr. Tanya Smith, who is coming to us, coming, actually coming back home as well. That's our second principal that's returning to us, so. And we also have our new director of public relations, and that is Ms. Jessica Gary Cantrell. Jessica, welcome to the, the position.
We didn't mean to run anybody off, so. Very good, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Uh, I recommend approval of the principal probationary contracts as submitted.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend approval of the assistant principal probationary contracts as submitted.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
I recommend approval of the supplemental contracts and the discontinuation as submitted.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion? All those in favor? Yes, uh.
So is she gonna tweet out that you're now the director?
And Instagram and Facebook and.
Blow it up, blow it up, girl, blow it up. When does that, when does that position start?
July what?
Uh, we do have a executive session for a unique transfer, so when we come back out of that, we'll just be voting.
Yeah, we'll vote on that one item.
And before I take a motion for that or recess, do we have anything for the good of the board before we adjourn or go to executive session? I would just like to say, congratulations again and congratulations to everybody. And, um, I do have a visitor here tonight. Is Ms. Jennifer, are you here? And you're, what are you trying to do, you're?
Um, here's my instructional leadership certification.
Okay. Okay. And you're, I've got some questions that I got help from Ms. Bass to answer for you, so I'll get those emailed to you, okay? All right, well, good to see you here too, so anything else before we go to?
She picked a lively meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's, you picked a good one.
Do you wanna take the break and then vote, you wanna?
Yeah, Bill needs to, would like a recess before.
We'll take it, yeah. We'll take a break and vote. So, but that does conclude our meeting, but.
Except for the.
Except for the executive session. Thank all y'all for coming.